Call the meeting to order, Wacomiko County Council Legislative Session 2023-04 for February, excuse, yes, for February 21st, 2023. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father.
Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us into temptation, but deliver us from evil, thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant on the agenda, entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. Ms. Hurley, good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 25-2023. This is authorizing the county executive to reallocate the CARES Act funding grant to increase expenditure for Piedmont parking lot rehabilitation, Piedmont headquarters, and old terminal roof rehabilitation, air traffic controller, control tower leaks, and ARF, S R E, building, and to decrease the expenditure for the ARF truck, local share, and fiscal year operations and maintenance for actual and estimated expenditures, and to amend the fiscal year 2023-2027 capital improvement plan, and to amend the fiscal year 2023 capital budget to authorize these funding changes. And we have Mr. Rudy here, our airport manager.
Ms. Hurley, at this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 25-2023. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This is in reference to this specific resolution. Seeing none, this concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 25-2023. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 25-2023. Motion? Second?
Second.
No discussion. Mr. Rudy, good morning. How are you? Just if you would mind giving us and giving the public just a bit of an overview. And if you could state your name, and we've already said who you are, but just everybody gets it right, you know?
Good morning. Tony Rudy, Airport Director.
Thank you.
So basically, this is, as we've updated the council on previous occasions, as we get bid numbers in for projects, or as scopes of projects have changed, basically, we're coming here with the most updated numbers we have. We recently bid the project for our snow removal equipment and aircraft fire and rescue building, as well as the rehabilitation to the Piedmont facilities and our air traffic control tower. So that's where we have these current numbers and the current update with the CARES funds.
Any questions, Commissioner Rudy? Seeing none. All those in favor of legislative bill Number 25-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Meant to tell the public that Shaney Shields, what you heard there, Shaney Shields is on a speakerphone today. We could not get her by Zoom. There was a confusion with the Wi-Fi. But she is here on a speakerphone. Correct, Shaney?
Of course.
Good. Wonderful. Good to have you. So unanimously.
In a way, it might have been a blessing not to see me.
I wouldn't say that, Shaney. Thank you very much. Ms. Hurley, thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Next is Resolution Number 26-2023. This is authorizing the county executive to accept and designate CARES Act grant funding from the Federal Aviation Administration, the amount of $10,960,000 for development projects at the Salisbury Ocean City-Wacomiko Airport.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 26-2023. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 27-2023. This is to authorize the county executive to acquire real property located on the southwestern side of Airport Road, being shown on tax map 49, parcel 1025, containing approximately 11.4175 acres, located in Salisbury, Maryland, for the purpose of extending the glide path and future expansion of Salisbury-Wacomiko Ocean City Regional Airport.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 27-2023. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 28-2023. This is the approval of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2024 through 2028. The council held work sessions with certain departments on January the 17th and February the 7th to discuss CIP projects. And before you is Pam Olin, Director of Finance.
Morning.
Ms. Hurley, entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 28-2023. Motion, second? Motion, second. Good morning, Solon.
Good morning. There are a couple minor edits, so I'm asking council, do they need to make an amendment to the attachment? Because there was a couple typos in the original version, and so you have the updated pages that would be replaced with the updated amounts.
These, the ones that you had already sent us prior to the meeting, those have already been included in the attachment to the resolution, so no motion would need to be made in order to make that amendment.
So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that they had the updated numbers. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? I know we've had a few work sessions in regard to the capital improvement program. Questions from Mrs. Olin? Okay. Did you have any comments?
As I've stated at the meetings, this is the current plan. As you know, when we come forward with the budget, we utilize this to help develop the budget to determine how much funding we're trying to accomplish. As changes are made, we update council and we update this plan.
That we are taking, for the public benefit, I know that we are taking consideration of the fact that inflation is where it is and interest rates are rising, but we're also taking that consideration, allowing for that as well.
Correct. And, you know, as we're finalizing the budget that will be submitted to council in April, we will also take a look at the allocation of the amount between bond and other funding sources, and does it make sense to reallocate? And at that time, we would bring that up to council when we submit the capital budget, that if we're making a change to how we have this allocated, we would let you know.
Referring to bonding versus paygo?
Paygo, yep.
Okay.
Or if we luck into other funding sources, like grants from state or federal sources.
Questions? All those in favor of Resolution 28-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solon.
Next is the submission of four appointments to the Behavioral Health Council, and an appointment and reappointment to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the county executive has submitted four new appointments to the Behavioral Health Council, and one new appointment and a reappointment to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance. The Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance is responsible for overseeing the Workforce Investment Act Fund and programs in the local community, and the Wacomiko Behavioral Health Council is responsible for the planning and monitoring of mental health and substance abuse programming. Next is the approval of the consent agenda for the boards and commissions. On the consent agenda, we have Resolution Number 29-2023. This is confirming the appointment of Hope E. King, L M S W, as a member of the Wacomiko Behavioral Health Council. Resolution Number 30-2023 is confirming the appointment of Thais Musangwa, R N, B S N B A, Administration, M B A, as a member of the Wacomiko Behavioral Health Council. Resolution Number 31-2023 is confirming the appointment of Kathleen Dobork Walker as a member of the Wacomiko Behavioral Health Council. Resolution Number 32-2023 is confirming the appointment of Brandy Wink as an ex-officio member of the Wacomiko Behavioral Health Council. Resolution Number 33-2023 is confirming the appointment of Lori Lee as a member of the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance. Resolution Number 34-2023 is confirming the reappointment of Tony Nichols as a member of the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve consent agenda for the board and commissions. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. The consent agenda has been passed. Like to thank all those who were taking on these roles with their appointments. Appreciate that very much.
Okay, next for your consideration is Resolution Number 35-2023. This is approving the revised bylaws for the Wacomiko County Commission for Women, and we have Mr. Funky Lufman here, Director of Administration, if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 35-2023.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 36-2023. This is amending the fiscal year 23 budget position control document to increase the salary for the lead equipment operator position in solid waste from $40,957 to $45,595. And again, this is Mr. Lufman, our Director of Administration, and Pam Olin, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 36-2023. Second?
Second.
No discussion? Counsel, have any questions in reference to the resolution? No. All those in favor of Resolution 36-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Shaney, is that an aye?
Shaney?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good morning, Mr. Mitchell. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. This is Legislative Bill 2023-02. It's an act to reorganize the office of county executive for the purpose of allocating duties, responsibilities, and setting employment qualifications for the Assistant Director of Administration, and the duties and compensation for a public information officer and legislative aide. It refers to the reorganization in Attachment A, and in essence, Attachment A indicates that there are currently five positions in the office, the county exec, director of administration, assistant director of administration, executive office coordinator, there's two of them. If this organization goes through, it will end up with the county exec, director of administration, assistant director with change of job description, two executive office coordinators, as is current, a public information officer, and a legislative aide.
Mr. Mitchell, hang on one second. Entertained a motion from council to introduce Legislative Bill Number 2023-02.
Hello?
Second? Second for discussion? Motion's second. No discussion. Good morning.
Good morning.
You can state your name and your position for the public, please.
Julie Giordano, County Executive. Pam Olin, Finance Director.
Funky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Erica Witz of Webb Cornbrooks, filling in for Mr. Paul Wilbur, County Attorney.
Good to have you.
Good morning.
Thank you. Hit the floor. Whoever would like to go first.
I don't know if we need to go back through. I mean, we've had some work sessions with this. I'm hoping that the council sees, you know, the understand, or at least has the understanding that I hope to have the opportunity to choose my team, maybe even at least through the end of the fiscal year, considering I have the salary savings to do it. It's not costing taxpayers any more money than it's already been budgeted. This can be, you know, addressed again in the budget process, but I think I've made my case as to why I need these positions.
Any questions from council? All those in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2023-02, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
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 Shaney?
Opposed.
Chair's opposed. The introduction of Legislative Bill Number 2023-02 fails. Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you'd like to make any comments, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Samuel Henry. I'm the First Vice President for Wacomiko County Branch of NAACP.
If you could get closer to that mic, or bring the mic closer to you, that would be a big help. I'm sorry about that.
Tch, 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 tch. Is that better?
Yeah.
I better stay over here.
I don't think we have the volume up very loud on that mic.
It's fine. I adjust. No problem. Again, my name is Samuel Henry, First Vice President for the Wacomiko County Branch of NAACP. So, dear council, President Cannon, and council members, let me preface this by saying, the NAACP is a nonpartisan organization. We serve, educate, protect, and advocate matters related to civil and human rights, discrimination, prejudice, inequality, and inequality for people of color. We represent the entire county and remain politically neutral, as stated in our bylaws. With that said, the following comments opposing Dan Cox as special counsel are in no way relate to any political party or affiliates. Wacomiko County NAACP vehemently opposes Dan Cox being appointed to any government leadership positions in Wacomiko County. Having done some research, we will find his politics and close political allies to be troubling at minimum, and offensive and divisive at worst. We encourage you to deny this request for the following reasons. Divisive rhetoric. Cox has called for a ban on critical race theory, which is not taught in Maryland public schools. While this is proven fact, he continues to deny it. CRT has been proven to be a college-led course, and if taught at all. Its purpose is literally to include the aspects of contributions of Black Americans that have been excluded from the American landscape and education. It is to highlight the atrocities that have been and continue to be committed upon and against our people of color in this country. So this study of incomplete history is okay, but inclusion is not. His close relationship and endorsement of and by Michael Peroco, sorry, excuse me, is troubling. Peroco served as proud born member of white nationalist group, the League of South, also known as organizers of the Unite the Right Rally in Charlottesville. Finally, he remains disappointed that Maryland did not succeed from the Union. He is a threat to democracy and can't be trusted to uphold the law. Dan Cox believes the presidential election results naming Biden the winner were false. Having sponsored buses to the January 6 rally, he has called for Vice President Mike Pence a traitor in a tweet. Continuing to deny the 2020 election results, he carried the same rhetoric during his own race and sued the Board of Elections. As an attorney sworn to uphold the law, Dan Cox accepts the endorsement of Michael Peroco, who teaches through the Constitution course which law to follow. Now, this is for no benefits for Wacomiko. Upon hearing that our county executive Julie Giordano wanted to hire Dan Cox as special counsel, the first question becomes, what happened to the current special counsel? There was mention from the county executive that he had to be fired for due to ethnic violations. Is this in public record? We would like to know what those are. Beyond that, there are hundreds of attorneys in the Demarva area, and even in Wacomiko County. We question the decision to bring someone from the outside who knows nothing about our county and does not live anywhere near us to be selected in this capacity. Where is the due diligence? Where is the promise of putting jobs in the hands of residents here? To my knowledge, Dan Cox lives in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and just accepted a new position as Chief of Staff for Senator Doug Mastriano from Pennsylvania. I question the reasoning behind it. Dan Cox heavily endorsed our county executive. We understand that people like to hire their friends, but this quid pro quo seems to go beyond the scope of normalcy. Lastly, Dan Cox is the person who ran against, lost to, and antagonized our current governor. What's more, why does this matter? Our county is heavily dependent upon the state funding. We are also in a vulnerable position to which we would not want to jeopardize our standing and access to the state. So ask yourselves, would hiring Dan Cox help or hinder our relationship with this new governor? The Wacomiko County NAACP Branch 7028B is opposed to the requests by Wacomiko County Executive Julie Giordano requesting to hire former gubernatorial candidate Dan Cox as special legal counsel. Wacomiko County government employees and officials must serve all of the community. We ask that the county executive withdraw this request and/or the council ensure that this is fully denied and killed in a work session. It would be disappointing to see this come forward as an actual resolution to be considered as a future meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the microphone.
Council President, really quick, can we define derogatory remarks and personal attacks?
I think we have time to do that in the work session you'd like to.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, in public comment, it's not allowed.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Good morning. James Yamakawa. I am with the Wacomiko Truth and Reconciliation Initiative. I live in Wacomiko County. Honorable members of the county council, we are an organization that seeks to address our community's history of white supremacy through education and advocacy. While we normally deal with issues surrounding racialized extremism, it is understood that said extremism rarely operates in a vacuum. That is why we ask this council to not allow the hiring of former gubernatorial candidate Daniel Cox as special legal counsel for Wacomiko County Executive Julie Giordano. First, given the campaign endorsements between the two parties and questions, we think that this hiring would be a clear conflict of interest. Second, Mr. Cox's history includes numerous instances of dehumanizing rhetoric directed at marginalized communities, from denying the importance of teaching Black American history, to virulent anti-LGBT positions that have been shown to put students and their families at risk of violence. Third, Mr. Cox chose for his running mate a person who purposely allowed the targeting of the first Black female superintendent of Queen End County's public schools. He also endorsed Michael Anthony Perutka, a former member of the League of the South, a white supremacist, pro-secessionist hate group, who would have been his attorney general if elected. Finally, he played a part in the January 6 Capitol insurrection, which had an authoritarian and anti-democratic ideology at its core, and follows a long history of such mob violence in support of white supremacy. None of this even touches on any fiscal or legal concerns that others may have. But consider our history as a community. We are a county with a history of white violence. We are a county whose schools were successfully sued by the Federal Justice Department over civil rights violations. We are a county in which an entire Black neighborhood was systematically dismantled. If those reasons aren't enough to reason to question the priorities of those in power, then what is? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mary Hubner, and I'm a resident of Wacomiko County. I'd like to read a portion of a letter written by DeShawn Dowdy, who is the Vice Chair of the Wacomiko Democratic Central Committee. The Wacomiko Democratic Central Committee is disappointed to see that Wacomiko County Executive Julie Giordano is requesting to replace our county's current legal, special legal counsel, Kevin Karpinski, with failed gubernatorial candidate Dan Cox. Mr. Karpinski has a long and distinguished career practicing law for local government, and should this request be granted, it would be, he would be replaced by a man who does not share Mr. Karpinski's record of success and legal skill set. Not only does Mr. Cox not share the same experience with local government as Mr. Karpinski, he is known for his track record of frivolous lawsuits against the state of Maryland on mandates, election laws, and other topics. In records we obtained from the county archives, we found that Mr. Karpinski's most recent contract renewal rated his time at $250 an hour, in contrast to Mr. Cox's requested rate of $350 an hour. As a candidate who ran on a platform of transparency and cutting wasteful spending of taxpayers' money, we are left with several questions. How can Executive Giordano justify this 40% increase? And with his pedigree and experience, why is she looking to fire Kevin Karpinski? County Executive Giordano, who has publicly stated that she is friends with Dan Cox and his wife, was endorsed by Mr. Cox in her race for county executive. This is a textbook example of cronyism, which the Oxford Dictionary has defined as the appointment of friends and associates to positions of authority without proper regard for their qualifications. This obvious conflict of interest being displayed is deeply concerning to Wacomiko Democratic Central Committee. And just a few comments of my own. I was a big fan of Governor Hogan, and he called Cox, at different times, a QAnon whack job, a nut, and mentally unstable. And he took three, and Governor Hogan said that he took three busloads of people to the Capitol on January 6, which some people have already been convicted of sedition for going to the Capitol. Thank you for your time.
You very much.
My name, excuse me, my name is Kelsey Maddox, and I'm a resident of Wacomiko County. I hope that in the vetting process for Daniel Cox, that we look at the people and the groups that he has been associated with. It is very easy to say, I am no longer associated with those groups, but the people you surround yourself with reflect your policies and your ideologies. When considering this appointment, think about it. If you have no knowledge about the white supremacy groups, if you have no knowledge about the groups that have been identified with him, look them up. Inform yourself, and be careful. Wacomiko County does not want to be involved with politics, with policies that are not reflective of our county's stances.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
Would calling Dan Cox be derogatory if you call him a white supremacist? I don't know. Is that, I mean, we've got derogatory comments on here, and I'm just making sure that we're not personally attacking somebody.
Personal attacks are relevant towards fellow council members or the executive. It's not, if they have a comment they'd like to make about another individual, public or not, they certainly have that privilege.
My name is Jackie Brown Thomas, and I'm standing in for some of the community people that are concerned. I'm not here to bash anyone, not no one, but I'm here for the concerns of bringing in people that might cause harm to the community. I know about this man because of what's written. I know about Ms. Juliana, and I also know that she has respect, but concerning what's going on now, we need to know more about what's going on with information. We need things put in the community before we come up here to talk, because this is the second time I done came up here, and it's too much bashing to me. Our community don't want to vote because of this. My concern is that we need to be on one accord. Like, if she want to... Like, if she want to invite somebody to put out here, you need to put out more information to the community. And then we come up here and discuss what we gonna do. This, from people from different places and stuff. Me personally, I don't want to hear it. I want facts. I want what's gonna happen. I want to know, like, the rest of what other gentleman was dismissed. I want her to involve the community, because people did vote for her. People went by what she said. I went to a few of her debates, and they were really good. But some of it that she says is not following her agenda. So I'm not gonna bash her. I just ask her to put more out in the community. That's all I'm asking. And I'm also asking about, people have flaws. I have flaws. Everybody in here have flaws. But when we come up here, we got to let our children know that we shouldn't be talking the way we talking. We really should. Ms. Juliana, I hope you listen to what I'm saying. Put information out, and you won't have all these problems that you are having, okay? Thank you.
Could you give us your name?
Jackie Brown Thomas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Thomas, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Yep.
Public comments, please.
I have a public comment.
If you don't mind, I'd like to let the public go first, and then certainly give you the time.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Luke Anzalot. I'm county resident of Wycomico County. I'm speaking on behalf of the Wycomico Democratic Central Committee. The Wycomico Democratic Central Committee is disappointed to see that Wycomico County Executive, our Wycomico County Executive, is planning to replace our county's current special legal counsel, Kevin Karpinski, with failed gubernatorial candidate, Dan Cox. Our county executive, who has publicly stated that he is friends with Dan Cox and his wife, was endorsed by Mr. Cox in the race for county executive. This is a textbook example of cronyism, which the Oxford Dictionary has defined as "the appointment of friends and associates to positions of authority without proper regard for their qualifications." In records we obtained from the county archives, we found that Mr. Karpinski's most recent contract renewal rate rated his time at $250 an hour, in contrast to Mr. Cox's requested rate of $350 an hour. As a candidate who ran on a platform of transparency and cutting wasteful spending of taxpayers' money, we are left with several questions. How can Executive Giordano justify this 40% increase? And with his pedigree and experience, why is he looking to fire Kevin Karpinski? Mr. Karpinski has a long and distinguished career practicing law for local government. And so this request be granted would be replaced by a man who does not share Mr. Karpinski's record of success and legal skill set. Not only does Mr. Cox not share the same experience with local government as Mr. Karpinski, he is known for his track record of frivolous lawsuits against the state on mandates, election laws, and other topics. This obvious conflict of interest being displayed is deeply concerning to the Wycomico Democratic Central Committee. Therefore, we are asking our county executive to withdraw this request.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Har. I sent an email this morning to the council, to everyone on it, so this is no surprise. While I do agree with a lot of the comments that have already been made, I just want to share my own perspective. I represent no one other than myself. I live in District 2, representing the organization. A little bit of background about me. I moved to the Eastern Shore in 1994. I was transferred here in the Navy. I worked at Wallops Islands for four years. That followed a four-year tour on the USS Nimitz, where I was involved in Desert Storm. I'm a third-generation, active-duty Navy veteran. My grandfather was in Pearl Harbor on the USS Nevada when it was bombed and survived. That's the battleship next to the Arizona. My father served in Vietnam. So I'm also a registered independent. I've served as an election judge here in Wycomico County for a number of cycles. I share all of that to say that I really have no agenda other than the fact that Dan Cox is a divisive individual. I'm not going to get into the details of relationships between the county executive and Mr. Cox, but it goes without saying that he is divisive. I don't understand what his relationship or position is to Wycomico County outside of that relationship. But I do believe, if there is a need for a special counsel, that there has to be numerous individuals on the Eastern Shore that could serve in this capacity and not bring the divisiveness that Dan Cox brings to this situation. And so that's just what I wanted to share, and that's what I put in my email. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Har.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Jerry Mason, and I'm a resident of Wycomico County. And I was almost shocked and appalled by the suggestion that we hire Dan, Daniel Cox as the attorney for the county council and executive. Why would we bring in a total stranger to our community? No one relates to him personally but the county executive. And I don't think it's fair to our community. And personally, I think it's a slap in the face to all of us. And I just want my opinion to be heard. This is me personally. I'm not representing an organization. But I feel that we need to have higher standards for our community than what's being presented by our executive. Come here. Thank you.
Dr. Mason?
Good morning. My name is Katrina Purnell. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Have been here a long time, and faces that weren't here, I'm still here. When you talk about the gentification, my family and my community was part of that. My parents' house was 218 Pilot's Lane. Oh, you don't know where that is anymore because the county courthouse down the street is on it. Then my grandmother's house was in front of where that brick building is next to the telephone company. It used to be St. Francis's Sales. She also had to move. A lot of my family and friends were separated, and we moved to Jersey Road. Wait a second. Then you wanted to build a highway, and you moved us again. For some of us that then moved out on Route 50, then you wanted to increase the dump behind where we live. Oh, my goodness. So if you don't think that we have some nervousness about this, you are very incorrect. We always are on the low end of your high ideals and what should be for the county. What I'm asking for as a resident of the county is that you look at all the individuals that live here. Look, no matter who they are, what district that you're in, that we should all count for something. We work. We pay our taxes. We volunteer. I've done that for over 40 years at Salvation Army. We do social events. We just finished our 38th celebration of Martin Luther King. And we are inventive, because I just want to drop this to you since it's Black History Month. Dr. Harry Quentin is one of the last living Tuskegee Airmen. He just passed away this past December 21st. We have a rich heritage of things that we have done, and I would like to see this county to appreciate all of its citizens for what all of us do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
I'd like you to know, Ms. Purnell, my family's house is right outside this window, before Route 50 came in.
My family's house is gone because Route 50 is there.
That's what I'm saying.
My name is Mary Ashantin. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I thank God for the opportunity to speak and for all those that spoke to President Cannon and members of the county council. Peace and blessings. I stand in opposition of the resolution to replace, to replace whatever, the current person in office to Dan Cox, who is asking for $350 an hour. I've been in conversation with the county executive, well, I guess by email, and one of the things that was mentioned is that there are certain situations and legal matters that our county attorney does not specialize in and requires outside counsel. So we need to replace the previous special counsel attorney. So I jotted myself some news. Now, when we have a law department, it's my understanding now that we have a law department. And I believe that, if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilbur is Director of the Law Department. And Mr. Wilbur belongs to a firm, a reputable firm. They have many lawyers. So it seems to me, and probably a lot of other taxpayers, that if Mr. Wilbur could not handle it, there would be somebody in that firm that could handle it. And that's the common sense way of thinking, that taxpayers, how we think. So again, I, and those I speak for, we are against putting Mr. Cox in place. In fact, we wish for this whole thing to be killed in the work session. The other thing I just want to mention that seems to be happening is that we're moving toward an oligarchy. An oligarchy is a small group of people having control of a country organizational institution, that's according to Google. And it seems that we're moving toward that. But I want to thank the county council for killing the bill about the reorganization. I'm really proud of you. That shows that you were looking out for the residents, which is your job. Now, I know that this county has two branches of government, legislative and executive. I just want for there to be a balance, and I just want for the legislative part of this make sure that they protect the residents of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Good morning. My name is Barry Beecham. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. And my question is why? You know, Mr. Barrett, you're in the printing business. Why do you buy a press? John, you're in rental business. You know, why do you buy rental properties? James, you're in the tile business. You know, why do you buy the tile saw that you know that you need as a tool? You know, as a county executive, county executive has people. That's their tool. So to me, when you look at this, her position, and you look at what's trying to be done, if you fight every step of the way that the county executive is moving toward, I understand there's checks and balances, and that's exactly what you are doing. But it seems to me that there's opposition constantly. The reason why we voted you in, into office, and the reason why the county voted her in, to her position, is to serve the citizens. Now, we might not agree on Dan Cox. We might not agree on the past attorney that's been terminated. But the truth of the matter is that people do business with who they know, like, and trust. I don't know Dan Cox on a personal note. Julie obviously does. You know, the people that are out here speaking against Dan Cox, they don't know him personally. And to me, to stand up here and to say something negatively about someone they don't know personally, the reason why you hire people, you hire people to help you get a job done, as far as it being something personal, this is about business. But the way that we get to buying the press that we need, or buying the rental property that we need, or buying the saw that we need, is because we know the tool that we need to get the job done. And I think that if Ms. Giordano has seen fit that Dan Cox could help her get the job done, I'm all in favor for Dan Cox. Thank you.
Ms. Beecham?
Good morning. Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. Want to talk about my favorite subject, which is Barren Creek Road in Mardella. But I want to make sure everybody understands right off the bat. There's no personal attacks. There's no sarcasm. I'm only stating, if I state anything, something has been said here, and I'm just repeating it. So I want to start off with, I guess there's a misunderstanding about my opposition to Barren Creek being rebuilt or replaced. And it seems to be that the understanding is that I am concerned about the traffic in front of my house. And I am. That's probably about the fourth or fifth thing that I'm concerned about. I've lived there while the road was there. I've dealt with the traffic on the road. I know how it is. So if the road gets rebuilt again, it gets rebuilt again. There was a comment made at the last open work session concerning my concern about speeding and heavy truck traffic and everything on the road. In reply to that comment, which drew a little bit of a laugh in the council chambers, was, "I'll talk to the city. They're great about that." So, you know, that's a little bit concerned. My number one concern with the replacement of the road is the $6 to $8 million that you're going to spend to replace a road that benefits absolutely no one other than the other family that lives on that road and myself. I used to leave my driveway, turn left, go to Delmar Road, go to Seaford, Delmar, wherever. Now I go out to Route 50, go up the Railroad Avenue, go down to the stoplight. I've been doing that for seven years. I've gotten used to it. Everybody that used to drive across Barren Creek Road has not driven across it in six and a half years. They've gotten used to it not being there. What is the benefit of spending $5 to $7 million on a road that is a convenience, not a necessity, a convenience? Been some statement about the importance of the road to fire EMS and police. There isn't any. Are the fire departments or the police departments standing up here telling you you need to put the road back? Is it so important that for six and a half years, you haven't put it back? So if nobody's needed it for six and a half years, why does somebody need it all of a sudden now? Because people have been told that the road will be put back. I understand, and I've been in meetings and locations, and President Cannon has been there, and people say, "Well, when are you going to put the road back?" And you hear it a lot. I hear a lot of people ask me, "Are they ever going to put the road back?" Why? I believe that they ask President Cannon and then the other council member, "When are you going to put the road back?" Just because the county keeps saying they're going to put the road back. If you say, "We're not going to put it back, and the reason we're not going to put it back is A, B, and C", then people will know that the road's not going to be put back, and they'll stop asking, "When are you going to put it back?" Statement was made in a previous meeting in dealing with the state and federal to get grants, that this is kind of on a back burner. We're looking a year down the road. And then the person on the video that day made a comment right after being told it's on the back burner. We're looking at it, that it was a hot topic. Well, is it a hot topic, or is it on the back burner? What is it? $850,000 in the budget this year for Barren Creek Road. $253,000, according to the meeting, has been spent on architectural drawings. Where are they? What is it showing us? What's the design of the road? We're going to have public hearings. We're going to have public hearings. Where are the public hearings? We talked a couple weeks in here about hunting on Sundays. Fantastic. How many people were lined up for hunting on Sundays to stand up here and talk to you about, yeah, let's do that. We need that. How many people are standing up here telling you, we need Bearin Creek Road? I don't see them lined up. It doesn't benefit anybody. Traffic, a comment was made. Has state highway been contacted about any problems it may create? The response to that was, no, we're just putting a road back that was already there. Yeah, you are, but it's been seven years. Traffic has increased immensely in seven years. You now have a DAP-TAP farm on Porter Mill Road that the exit for all the truck traffic to that tank farm comes out of Riggin Road at the intersection of Bearin Creek Road and Route 50. Traffic has changed immensely in six and a half years. People need to be consulted, need to find out, and we need to quit spending money. Let's fix the road and fix it right and put it in a budget. I believe you have $84 million in a fund. If you've gotten $8 million for the past six years from the state, that's 48 million. So you take the 48 from the 83, and you're down to 35 million. You could have put the road back six years ago for 4 million. What's the deal, folks? Quit passing this down the road. Either fix the road because you have the money to fix the road, or make a decision, no, we're not going to fix the road. Close the road off properly. Talk about liability to the county if somebody gets hurt? That's a question for the attorney. The property is posted as no trespassing. If you enforce no trespassing, my belief is that you don't have liability. It's only if you ignore enforcing the no trespassing. So I'm not mad at y'all. I just want you to make a decision. Six and a half years, I've had two dump truck loads of asphalt millings piled up in front of my front door. Fix the road or don't fix the road. But stop pushing it down the road. You have the money to fix it if you want to fix it. If you don't want to fix it, tell the community that doesn't care anymore, six and a half years later. We're not going to fix it because we're going to give raises to 911 operators, deputy sheriffs, road department personnel, people who need to make a good living in this county and aren't making it with the salaries that they have. That's probably a good reason why we have 60 or 70 vacancies in the county, why the sheriff's department is underfunded. Why 911 can't keep an operator in there? Because they're not being paid. You've got the money. Don't waste it. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Vaughn Siggers, Wacomico County resident, Mr. President, council members, Madam Executive. I thank you all for this opportunity to speak on this subject matter. Congratulations to all of your victories, by the way. It was a rather horrifying experience to witness the implosion of our democracy almost on January 6th during that insurrection. I would hate to think that any element of that could be here and potentially contribute to such an atmosphere again in this county. I can appreciate anybody who wants to put their team together, our executive director who wants to put her team together and find this person to be suitable for her team. But I don't perceive it to be suitable for the Wacomico County residents' team. So the county executive's team versus the Wacomico County residents' team, it's quite a conflict there. I don't want to take up much of your time. I just want to say, as an individual, I hope that Mr. Cox is rejected. There was a love song, "Once Upon a Time," that says, it's too bad you had to go so far to find hope so near. I'm sure that what we need to fulfill that obligation in Wacomico County, it's right here in Wacomico County. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
All right. So I've been listening and actually had this statement prepared. And I agree that you should have more information, and so that's what I plan to actually give you today. So I want to start off by saying, anytime a politician, that's what I am now, is explaining, they say that you're losing, but I find it imperative for citizens to have all the facts, or at least a majority of the facts. I am not firing Kevin Karpinski for Dan Cox, first of all. Kevin Karpinski is from Baltimore, and he was terminated over four weeks ago. Okay? Karpinski was charging the county $250 per hour in a 2020 agreement, and at any point in time, that contract could be renegotiated to increase fees. Kevin Karpinski's was based on volume. That's why he got the $250 an hour rate. Second, not one other person in this room or watching can actually define special counsel and what Dan Cox would actually be doing for our county, and so I do want to brief you on that. Dan will be handling our personnel manual and codes for county employees. He will also be handling the FOP negotiation for the next contract and a potential lawsuit involving yet another deputy because of Kevin Karpinski. That's it. That's all he's handling. Paul Wilbur is our county attorney who handles 95% of our legal work here in the county. If I was to have hired Dan Cox as our counsel, I would have actually saved our county $150,000 a year. But I have a feeling that if I was to have done that, I would be getting the same 75 emails from the same organizations to oppose Dan Cox. So it's not a money thing. And as far as the political aspect, I am not, as county executive, getting into the business of hiring, firing, stiff-arming, blackballing, or not hiring or appointing anyone based on their political views or because they lost an election. Putting yourself out there as a candidate, I don't care what side of the aisle you fall on, I give you the utmost respect. To even suggest that I do that is completely inappropriate. But if we want to go down the political rabbit hole, Dan Cox won this county as a Republican candidate overwhelmingly in the primary, and he won this county along with Dorchester, Somerset, Worcester, and 10 more in the general election. That means that the majority of voters in Wacomico County trusted Dan Cox enough to be their governor, including our sheriff, Mike Lewis, and I will assume five out of seven, I don't want to make assumptions, but five out of seven members, and additionally, our congressman, Andy Harris. So I think that he can handle 5% of our legal work that has nothing to do with politics. I don't care if anyone in this room doesn't like Dan Cox as a political candidate. It's irrelevant. The election is over. I am looking at Dan Cox, the attorney. Also, Dan does not need political favors from me or this county. He is literally the chief of staff to Doug Mastriano in Pennsylvania. So I stand by Dan as my choice as special counsel. If the council agrees with me, as I hope they will, we will have an amazing attorney here that is not handling anything political. They're handling personnel and an FOP contract. Thank you.